The Leominster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarolus Insurance Agency at www.decarolusinsuranceagency.com and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.
And Mr. Chairman of Finance, you have a 6:30 public hearing?
I do, and I believe we have members from the Assessors Office here. They'd like to join us. Welcome. This is a 6:30 public hearing. C-28 Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the annual tax classification hearing be scheduled for December 12th for the purpose of setting the annual factor used for fiscal year 2023 taxes. This is a hearing of the Finance Committee. Second member of the committee to my immediate left is Pauline Cormier, Ward Two Counselor. And the third member of the committee, Peter Angelini, is the Ward Five Counselor. Good evening, Board of Assessors and our Comptroller. We find ourselves having another one of these hearings once again. And Mr. Connor, if you'd like to probably just give us a brief introduction of why we're all together this evening, that might be a good way to start.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us. Again, to my left, I have Mr. Rick Dondaro. I have Isaiah Coranda. And then the Comptroller is Jen Reddington. For those who've given the City Council members the tax classification booklets, if people want to follow along at home, you can go to the city's website, go to the homepage and mouse over Departments, go to City Management, and then Assessors Office. And there are a series of tabs along the left-hand side, one of which is labeled Tax Classification Booklets. If you select 2023, you will see what we are speaking to tonight. So the tax classification hearing options are a selection of a minimum residential factor, selection of a discount open space for open space, granting of a residential exemption or granting of a small commercial exemption. It is important to note that City Council is not setting the tax rate tonight, although we have a good idea of what the tax rate will be. Final submissions need to be entered to the Massachusetts Department of Local Services for approval. Tonight, the council is deciding to shift the burden or not. There are four ways to do that, which I just described. Classification is to split or a single tax rate is the one that we're going to be focusing on tonight.
So is it correct to suggest, Mr. Connor, that we will be ultimately tasked with voting on one of those items, which is to determine whether we want to split the tax rate or have a factor of one?
We will be voting on all four, but generally, history over and over, the only one that really concerns the city of Leominster would be the splitting of the tax rate.
That's the premier, right?
Yeah, I do have some explanations about the others that I'll conclude with that will...
And then you'll give us your recommendation on all four?
The Board will have a recommendation for all four.
Thank you very much.
So if you want to follow along onto page 19 of your classification booklet, I'm just going to go over some of the numbers that we've come through this year. The total valuation of the city increased from $4,876,293,479 to $5,403,677,353. And this is an increase of 10.82% from fiscal year 2022. The average single-family home assessed value for fiscal '23 is $371,691. This is a 12% increase from fiscal year '22's average assessed value of $332,342. The estimated tax levy for fiscal '23 is $83,970,675, and this is a 3.98% increase over fiscal '22. For a thorough summary of the FY '23 adjustments, you can refer to page 12 of the tax classification booklet. The assessed value change percentages are in the column on the far right. The value of the single-family class increased about 12%. The value of condominium class increased about 16%, and three-family properties increased about 16%. The overall commercial value increased about 4%, and the industrial value increased about 12%. We're seeing a good amount of arms-length sales this year, which we will analyze for fiscal year 2024. As you can imagine, fiscal year 2024 will be analyzing sales that happened in 2022. Those numbers are still increasing, so people are still paying a premium for all types of properties. At this point, if it pleases the council, Rick Dondaro has done some market analysis. What we have, these are the numbers that we study and create our values from, and he'd be happy to tell you a little fun information about what's been happening there.
Thanks for having us tonight. Yeah, you guys all received one of these, I believe, little market research, something I typed together here. This is outside of the Assessors' database. This is something I do every year for the city. I just do this to check on, basically, are we over-assessing people, just to get right down to it. So we basically base our assessments on fair market value. In this case, for your fiscal '23 bill or your January 1 assessment, we used the calendar year 2021 sales. So on the printout that we gave you, I thought it was important to show a few years here, just to help, you know, the general homeowner or property owner of any type. This is basically the most concise way of doing this with single-family homes, because there's no equipment selling, there's no namesake, it's not a business purchasing a business. So we thought using single families would shed some light on what's been happening to the marketplace, specifically here in Leominster. I've been an appraiser about 22 years. I haven't seen such an increase in those 22 years over a three-year period. So I just thought it was important to put this on paper. And you can look at some of the things that are underlined. And the amount of sales in Leominster is very consistent, and you can see that by the total number of arms-length sales over 2020, 2021, 2022. But what's really telling, and it's important to know, and you can share this with your constituents, a lot of people want to pay a lot of money to live in the city of Leominster. It's very clear here. To see this window of three years, the average sale price in 2020, based on the analyzation of 358 sales, was $330,000. A year later, calendar year 2021, the average sale price was $380,000. That's a $50,000 increase on the average single-family home in Leominster in a 12-month period. And then so far, we are, I did this on December 9th, so just about through 2022, the average sale price for a single-family home in Leominster is $420,000, which is a $40,000 increase from last year. So we thought it was important to share this. You can share this with the taxpayers. What assessors do is value property. We take great pride in making sure we're not over-assessing people. That's why we take another step here, and we look at the market from an appraisal perspective. And numbers are very telling. You know, numbers don't lie. So we just wanted to share this with you. The increase has been dramatic, in my opinion. And there's a lot of data on this one printout where it shows you list-to-sale price ratios. You know, people in 2022 paid, on average, 5% over list price. Again, in my 22, you know, career, 22-year career, I haven't really seen something like that on such a consistent basis. A lot of people are bringing money to the table outside of the appraised value. But what that does to the overall value is it increases it, because we are assessing, appraising deeds. And if it closes on that deed for $560,000, whether the real estate professionals thought it was worth $500,000, and then the bidding wars began, we have to sit with the final number, and that is the value. The true value of a property is whatever someone's willing to pay for it. So we're just taking great pride and great care in making sure we're not over-assessing folks. We just wanted to share that little window in time for you of the single-family homes.
Gentlemen, great job, as always, with all the data. I mean, this is really helpful, really paints a very accurate and in-depth picture of what's going on, not just in the market, but, you know, in terms of all the classes of properties. And once again, I think the story sort of remains the same. You know, the residential class of property is growing at a faster rate than the commercial and industrial classes. And, you know, to adopt other than a factor of one, we have to put some real pressure to get any real kind of relief to the residential taxpayer. We have to put some significant pressure on the commercial and industrial base. So I call it the punishment chat that you give us every year.
Yeah, if you want to flip to it.
Yeah. So a factor of one, of course, both, all of the properties are taxed, at least for the sake of argument right now, you did make the caveat that this isn't a final number. But at $15.54 per thousand, if we went, I just pulled a random, you know, split out of my head and said, okay, how about 1.20 for a split? So that crams down the residential rate to $14.85, which is a saving of 69 cents per thousand, if my math is correctly. But it bumps up the commercial and industrial rate to $18.65, which adds the pain portion, $3.11 per thousand, to those classes of properties, because the overall base, commercial-industrial base, is a little over 14% between the two of them versus 82% for the residential rate, if my math again is correct. So you can't, it's really hard to get any appreciable savings for residential taxpayers without really crucifying the commercial-industrial base. And the theory has always been in Leominster, at least as long as I've been here, is that to do that is counterproductive, because if you throw those kinds of rates at prospective or current taxpayers, then you're going to discourage them from staying here in Leominster, which is counterproductive to what we want.
Exactly.
So, you know, again, like I said, it just seems to be a pretty sort of common year-to-year sort of story. And I think, am I correct in summing it up pretty much that basically?
Yep. The number we like to do is for every dollar, you reduce the residential tax rate, using our numbers now.
Yeah.
You're going to increase the CIP rate by $4.51.
Yeah. That's punishing.
It's just not worth it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So you want to go through the other three matters we're voting on besides the tax rate?
So the vote required tonight is the residential factor, and what we've been speaking of. It allows a shift in the tax burden among major property classes generally used to provide relief to the residential class by shifting burden to commercial, industrial, personal property classes. Residential class must maintain a minimum residential factor, and the Board of Assessors recommends a vote to adopt a residential factor of one, no split rate. The residential exemption is used by seasonal resort-type communities to shift the burden from principal residences by exemption up to 20% of the average residential assessed value. The burden shifts within the residential class. The Board of Assessor recommends a vote of no. The open space discount is used for the purpose of preserving open space, conservation land or land used for public enjoyment. This allows for a shift of the tax burden within the residential class of up to 25% of the residential factor. The city of Leominster only has $374,900 assessed property value. That's all of it. So the Board of Assessors recommends a vote of no.
Is it likewise on the residential exemption, we just don't have a lot of property in that class, correct?
Yeah, for that exemption to work.
Yeah.
It's just, there's not, there's not enough.
Okay.
And small commercial exemption, up to 10% of assessed value of eligible commercial properties defined as business on Department of Workforce Development list with an assessment of less than a million. And the burden shifts within the CIP classes from small businesses to larger businesses. The Board of Assessors recommends a vote of no.
Okay. And that's consistent with prior years, right?
Always, yes.
Okay. At this point, I would open questions to members of my committee. Councilor Cormier, do you have any questions?
So the question that I get asked all the time, and it's probably a basic question, and I know that we've answered it, but if we can put it in more, let's call it civilian terms, is they say, I own a home, why can't the businesses pay a little bit more? Why can't you help us out, and why can't the businesses pay a little bit more? If you could explain that in more of a basic, non-technical language, I think that would be a big help, because that's the number-one question I get all the time.
Yeah. So the problem with shifting the burden to the commercial class is, again, we stated before, to do it in any significant way that the residential class would feel a relief would be such a heavy burden to the commercial class. So a small, little shift of the burden to the commercial class is not going to be felt by the residential class. You really have to go to great lengths to make it, even drop a couple hundred dollars for somebody on an average single family. You know, it changes when you have a very high-end home, or if you're on the other end, if you, you know, if you have a very meager home, and then you're on a very tight budget, you know, those things might be more significant. But when you have to think about how you want to fairly and equitably treat the whole class of taxpayers, the only way you can do it in a way that would make anybody really, the broad population feel the benefit of it, you would drive businesses right out of Leominster.
Okay. And it would discourage any new businesses from coming into the city as well?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cormier. Councilor Angelini, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. I just, I think I'd like to sort of segue off of Councilor Cormier's question, but I think we had some unique dynamics. And please feel free to correct me if you think I'm wrong. In this cycle, when we noted the arms-length transactions in residential property, I think a lot of people were probably rushing to beat the Federal Reserve's interest rate hikes. And I think we've all heard of stories where home buyers paying above the asking price routinely, which I think adds to that fevered pitch of real estate transactions and the price increases we see. And on the industrial side, we saw almost a 13% increase rate. Do you attribute that partially to some of the dynamics at work as far as the cannabis zoning, or the, you know?
Yeah, I see people paying a premium for industrial space right now. There's limited industrial space. We get a lot of calls from the Foster Group, which they handle a large area, you know, central Massachusetts. And they say, and you can see it when you're driving around, you see them all popping up everywhere. As far as the cannabis industry in Leominster, you know, there hasn't been many of those at this point. But I did measure one the other day on Pioneer Drive. So they are happening, and that's a brand-new facility. But what we do see in the marketplace, and it's common, it's been multiple years of increase. So usually, once you're a few years into an increase, the commercial-industrial catches on, and now investors are purchasing those properties. We're seeing them purchase with leases in place. And I mean, the numbers that they're paying, I mean, it's not brick and mortar and land. There's other agreements involved, but it's really increasing dramatically in the commercial as well.
No, I think Leominster, obviously, we've been, we have a couple permitted, but other communities have significantly more. It puts pressure on those looking for industrial space, and it drives them out of where they were originally, probably. But I've seen lease rates for warehouse space, for instance, double in the last 12 months.
Sure, yeah.
I don't know if that signals we're at the top of the cycle or...
Well, and then the investment type of residential building, six units, seven units, eight units, those are off the charts because they're rent-driven, income-producing properties. The income is producing the value. So when people are paying $1,400 for a two-bedroom as opposed to $800 two or three years ago, that building is really doubled in value over a short period of time, three years, two years.
And then the final pain player, as my colleague, the chairman, refers to it, is the fact that commercial, the commercial space is under great pressure, you know, the malls and such.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So those valuations are plummeting, or certainly significantly less valuable than they were a few years ago.
Yeah, it's a moving vessel, so it's...
But unique, I think that's a trend nationally.
Sure, right.
Industrial properties are also being purchased for portfolio management. So, you know, these things are solid investments that, you know, they're loaning against. So our job to create a value that takes those things out of the equation, and we're trying to get down to a building and land value, comes down to the commercial-industrial owners being forthcoming with their income and expenses. And we get about a 30% return on our I and E forms that we send out, and we'd love to see that go up, because it's only going to help you. You know, otherwise, we're in the dark. So that's one thing.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it.
Councilor Angelini?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I would open to the council in general. Councilor Hutter?
Thank you, Mr. President. This 5% increase in residential properties averaged over the last three years, what happens when this real estate bubble collapses and the property goes down? People are going to be saying, hey, my property is less worth less now than what it was two years ago, but I'm paying more in taxes. Is there a way to explain that to people? You know, we're dealing with a lagging factor, you know?
Exactly what happened in 1991, Congress.
Yeah, exactly.
It's all based on the budget, not on the valuation.
Well, that's when, yeah, the budget comes into it. I mean, your real estate value, it's a separate piece. You know, we do the assessments based on fair market value, whether it's an industrial building, commercial building, residential property, as far as when the market changes, let's call it. I hate to say bust, but, you know, we'd like to hope it's gradual, so that, you know, everybody lands on their feet. You know, it's gone up dramatically in the last few years, so we're hoping it's good. It seems to be getting closer to stabilization. When the rate went, the rate changed a couple months ago, things have stabilized. The overpaying, bringing money to the table, has cooled off big time. So we haven't seen values go down, though, at this point. So it's not, you know, people panic and say, okay, well, wait a minute, we're at the bubble here, and it's going to tank. But we don't see that at this point. You know, 2022, the values are up from 2021, so we're still, you know, the crystal ball, when it's going to, you know, stop or start coming down, you know, can't really speak to that.
I just want to be clear that we are not forecasters. We report the market.
It's a difficult situation, I understand. But, you know, that is one of the biggest complaints that I've heard in the past, is, you know, why am I paying more and my property is worth less now?
Right.
And, you know, and, Mr. Dondaro, I'm kind of going to disagree with you, because I think it is a bubble, and I think it is going to burst, but that's just a personal opinion, you know?
Again, well, right, to Bill's point, we report the market. So we don't build houses, we don't buy houses, we don't sell houses. So we see the market, we're very careful in analyzing it, and if the market does go down and your assessed value, based on fair market value, goes down, we will follow suit. And as far as the budget, if the budget goes up or down, you know, we have no control over that. So, you know, we're part of the equation, but we can't speak to why, you know, your value's going down and your taxes are going up. It's a very difficult question. But everything costs more, taxes pay to run the town, and, you know, there's no crystal ball to, you know, see the future. But we hope it's a gradual decrease, when and if that happens.
Okay, thank you.
That's all we could hope for.
Councilor Brady?
Good evening, all. Just based on the conversation with some of my constituents, obviously, it's going to go up. In North Leominster, there's a lot of people that are on fixed incomes, elderly, retired, all that. Could you, I know there's some programs in place, but could you just let some of the people know, some of the programs you have, that people need relief, what's available, the city has in place?
Sure. So our elderly exemptions are available, starting with seniors who are age 65 and older. And it's based off of income and assets, so you'd have to report to us, you know, your financial situation. And if you are below the minimum, or the maximum, sorry, amount of income and assets, you would qualify for an exemption. And there's a number of different ways. We have two for elderly, and then it's a different number if you're 70. It's a little more, it's a little easier to qualify. And then we have veterans exemptions as well. There are about 600 that we approve every year.
And that's right through your office?
That's, they come right to, you come right to the assessors, and you can deal with our staff, and they'll help you fill out the form and go through your materials. Just, all you got to do is make sure, online, the forms are available, but it's a lot easier to call us, and we'll help you out.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay. Councilor Charlotte Foziffer?
Thank you very much. I just have a quick question. This is for Bill. When you went through the list of the four different votes that we have to take tonight, the last one, you mentioned shifting some of the burden, I guess, from small businesses to big businesses. Is that right?
Yeah.
Can you just explain that a little bit for me? I just, I wasn't clear about that.
So the recap is up to 10% of assessed value of eligible commercial properties defined as businesses on the Department of Workforce Development list. So it's a list that's put out by the state. And of those businesses, the ones that would qualify are the ones that are valued less than $1 million. Then you would vote to, you know, I'd have to calculate a shift based, you know, I'd give you, like I do give the changes, basically, I would give you an amount of parcels that would qualify, which ends up being pretty small. There's not a ton of qualification, you know, it's, I can't even remember the last time I did it, it was maybe like 120 different parcels that would actually qualify for this. And I would give you the shift numbers, and you would vote to decide on whether you wanted to do it or not. It's something that I could, you know, definitely put forward and calculate for you, but we had never done it in the past. It's a very... and calculate for you, but we had never done it in the past. It's very rare that communities do it. But it is an option.
And so the small businesses that are valued at less than $1 million, they would receive, I mean, the benefit is that businesses worth more than $1 million would actually be subsidizing.
They would take on the burden.
They would take on that burden, okay. And then I just want to follow up one other thing on Councilor Brady's question about the tax exemption for elderly folks. What percentage of their tax bill? Is it a sliding scale in terms of what the exemption would be?
It's a calculated amount every year. So it's based off of cost of living adjustments. But it's, there's a statutory minimum, and then the city matches 50% of the statutory minimum. So, you know, one of the ones that we qualify for is, ends up being $750, because the statutory minimum is 500. We match 250. And they all operate on that cost of living adjustment that I do calculate every year that's provided by the Department of Revenue.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
I saw Councilor Frida's hand.
Yep. I'm going to go with Rich on never seeing, I've been doing this for 45 years, and I've never seen increases like they are now. And trying to appraise a property is even a bigger joke. You know, trying to go up there when it's $50,000 higher than what the list price and it sold in 24 hours, and there were 22 offers on the property. So, you know, it's a crazy market, there's no question. It's going to, we know it's going to change. But I think, right now, we don't have, we still have a demand situation. We don't have a lot of inventory. And I think that's still, people still need a place to live. And back in the day, when, when the interest rates were 18%, 16%, people weren't afraid to buy. You can't change the price of the house, but you can always refinance and lower the, lower your mortgage rate. So people aren't afraid of that. It's not going to last forever. So, I mean, that's when the best deals have been gotten, actually.
Councilor, we're going to, I think we're at 7 o'clock, so...
Just if we can hold it right there, I'll come right back. Okay, at this time, I got to call the meeting to order for December 12, 2022. Will you all please stand and join me for a salute to the flag?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now going to take a roll call of the honorable members of Lemmonstern City Council, beginning with Councilor Badanza.
President.
Councilor Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Edinger.
Present.
Councilor Angelini.
Present.
Councilor Brady.
Present.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Councilor Deacon.
Present.
Councilor Frida.
Present.
And I am present. All nine members are present. Does the chairwoman, the vice president, have any records to approve this evening?
I do. Mr. President, I have the minutes of the November 28, 2022 meeting. I find them to be in good order, and I ask that they be placed on file.
Okay, if there's no objections, we will place the minutes for November 28, 2022 on file. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to go into recess. But Councilor Badanza and Councilor Cormier, I saw your hand as a second. All those in favor of going into recess signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, we are now in recess. You may continue.
And I believe, Councilor Frida, you have the floor.
Thank you. Your data, is that all MLS data, pretty much?
A lot of, yeah, most of it, yeah. We have CoStar, MLS, Banker and Tradesman, you know, with all the typical sources. Again, this wasn't pulled from, that sheet was not pulled from the assessors' database. That was just me, just as a check, if you will.
I think it is important to note, as Bill mentioned, because everybody does think, I've been sitting here for 30 years, and every year, everybody thinks that we set the tax rate. When they see that their taxes are going to go up, they're going to think that's what we did tonight. So it's important to note. But, you know, we touched on the fact that it's the budget. And I think that needs to be stressed, but we don't stress it at budget time. And when the market, as the council across said, when the market starts changing, if you need $150 million to run your city, and that's what you had this year, and that's what you need next year, if not more, and the values go down, your taxes rate's going to go up. And doesn't always increase the taxes, but most of the time, it doesn't lower it. So, you know, that's an important factor when we, when we do the budget. You know, every time we increase it, we're going to increase people's taxes, pretty much however you look at it. You're asking for more money. So it's not the classification. I think we prided ourselves in, in the city on the classification of one for, forever, that I've been sitting here. We've been in envy of neighboring communities for a long time. We've been business friendly, and, and we're known for that. And that's a good reputation to have. So, I mean, I certainly support the classification of one. So, but, you know, thanks, Rich, for, for doing what...
Sure, yeah, my pleasure.
We already know, even though we don't want to read it.
Well, we do it all day. That's what we do all year. We're careful what we do, and we care about it.
I know. You can't, you can't change what's happening. It's, it's crazy, absolutely crazy. So.
Good. Thank you, Councilor. I'm going to go to the council president first.
I don't have any questions, but I just, as always, I just want to thank you for, this is probably one of the most detailed explanations of anything that we have to vote on every year. And we don't even have to ask for it. It just comes to us this way. And, you know, it's, it's a good job. It's pretty self-explanatory, for me, anyway. And thank you, guys, very much for all that you do. I know that every year, there's always somebody that I know of that you work with that's not happy with their tax bill. And you guys do a wonderful job. We certainly hear about it. It gets back to us, and you do very well. So thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Mr. President, I think Councilor Edinger had another question?
Thank you, yeah. I have just one question. Obviously, the mall, the old Sears Town Mall has an effect on our tax base this year. What would, what would be the effect of having that, you know, this is completely abstract, okay? What would be the effect of having that become a multi-use type of a situation with apartments and businesses? Would you be able to tell, or would it...
No, I mean, there's no saying what the value would be. I mean, I would have to have details of, you know, how many units would be coming in, how many rentals, you know. And it's really a matter of getting an income and expense detail, and what kind of rents that they would expect. You know, as far as leasing, you know, the commercial side, you know, we have so much, you know, price per square foot, and prices, sales per square foot, there's a million different ways that we go about valuing that. And you're going to get pushback on each method that you use. So we try to bring them all together and be within a range of each other to make a sensible evaluation. It would be pretty easy basing off of, you know, we've had Brooks Pond is just expanding. And, you know, just using that as an example, if they were, if something was going to come in, and we could do a direct relation to that, you know, we know what they're getting for rents over there. And we know what people are willing to pay. And if these are going to be, you know, if they were going to put in units that are better, you know, you would expect to charge a little more. But as of right now, I mean, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't have a significant relief factor, I don't think.
No, the relief factor is going to be the, the fact that the mall wants to be assessed at full fair cash value, whatever it is going to be. And that's, that's the settlement that we've come to with them. So they are going to work very closely with us as they rebuild out. And they're going to show us the money that they've invested. And they want to be, they want no break. So that's, anyway, it's going to come on. It might be a changing vessel, but they, they are cooperative with the city, and they're very happy to be here.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Frida?
Yep. Just in reference to the mall, that was absorbed in last year's classification, right? Last year's budget, or last year's tax rate?
I mean, the, the details of the settlement, I can't go into, but, I mean, it was done in executive session. But, I mean, the value of the mall will be significantly lower this year for fiscal '23. Fiscal '24 will be dependent on what they've done over there.
And did I miss it? Did you give an estimate of the average single-family tax increase?
Yeah.
Did I miss that?
It's $272.
$272, the average increase in single-family housing.
Average single-family value.
What about multi?
Multifamily is a little different, because it's, there's too many different types to give. I don't, I don't have that number right in front of me.
Okay, that's good. That's all right.
Okay, I'm going to go to members of the public now. Is any member of the public that wishes to address the council on this public hearing, C-28, Tax Classification? And I will ask a second time, is any member of the public that wishes to speak on this public hearing, C-28? And a third and final time, is any member of the public that wishes to address us regarding C-28, Tax Classification? Seeing none, unless the assessors have anything further to add, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And while we remain in recess, we have a public hearing that's scheduled for 6:40 PM on 13-23. If the chairman of Legal Affairs would like to proceed with that hearing on 13-23.
Yes, good evening. 13-23, this will be a public hearing of the Legal Affairs Committee. My name is Peter Angelini, chairman. I'm joined this evening by the two members of Legal Affairs, Councilor Mark Badanza, Ward 4 Councilor, and Ward 2 Councilor Paul Cormier. This is petition 13-23. Officer Julio Ramos, Police Department, request to amend Chapter 13-24, the revised ordinance entitled Motor Vehicles in Traffic, Chapter 13, Section 13-24, the revised ordinance says entitled No Parking on Certain Streets, is hereby amending by inserting the following text, State Street, both sides, from point beginning 20 feet from the intersection of North Main Street to a point 302 feet from said intersection. A brief overview on this is, apparently, this is an ongoing issue that arises from a policy of no smoking, partial, is part of the problem, on the premises of State Street. So right beyond where the rail trail is, it's city property. So what's happening is cars are parking on both sides, basically, of the entrance from North Main Street. And it's very difficult for school buses to turn in there. It's creating, creating some issues with people loitering in that area as well, and some congestion at the rail trail crossing. The Police Department has suggested placement of no parking signs on both sides of the street to alleviate that problem. And that's basically it. And at this point, I'm going to go to other members of my committee to see if they have any questions. Councilor Badanza?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm all set. Thank you. I don't have any questions. Councilor Cormier?
I don't have any questions.
Members of the council. All right, seeing none. Oh, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
No, it's okay.
Councilor Brady?
Has there been any dialogue with Riverside Village residents as about, you know, what option are you going to give? Where tobacco is still legal, you know, we're going to just say, no, no parking and no smoking. They can't smoke on the property without getting evicted. What options are we leaving for them?
I don't know. I mean, if it wasn't, if it wasn't a safety problem, then the police wouldn't be petitioning us. So I guess right now, that's not our problem. That's their problem. Our problem here that we're trying to address tonight is how to maintain safety at the entrance of the, of State Street in North Main. I guess the discussion about smokers' rights is for another day.
Anyone else? Council, oh?
Yeah, yeah, no, just to follow up that, it just, I'm all 100% support the police and public safety and all that. It just seems to me like low-hanging fruit. We've got to operate, you know, if we're going to say no, are they going to go on the rail trail? I mean, I'm just being devil's advocate, that's all.
Yeah, no, I have a hard time reading mine, so I have no idea where they plan to go, but I'm sure we'll find out. And perhaps we'll be hearing from the Police Department after these signs go up to deal with problems that may arise as a response to these signs being placed there. But right now, that's all I can, that's all I have, is what Officer Ramos has sort of conveyed to me as the reasoning behind this petition. I'm sorry, Councilor Brady, you good? Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yeah, thanks very much. I'm just, I'm looking at the map. And so it's 300 feet, you know, it's 20 feet from North Main Street, and then 302 feet further up, right? So it's the whole stretch of, I know Riverside Village very well, having been there many times. But anyway, so I guess my question to the Ward 5 Councilor is, does, I don't know, does Officer Ramos, I understand if there's a public safety issue with buses not being able to turn around. I mean, that's something that needs to be rectified. But I guess my question would be, does that whole stretch have to be made into no parking? Or is there, you know, could it be 100 feet? Could it be 75 feet? I mean, 302 feet is a lot of, it's a big stretch of that road. And that's the main entrance in. And I've been there for different kinds of activities. They have the night out in August, I can't remember the exact name of it, but where public safety people come in, they demonstrate. It's a very big celebration at Riverside, for example. And there's very little parking, you know, for non-residents. So I'm just concerned, or my question is, you know, I'm concerned that it's that whole length from North Main Street to the rail trail that Officer Ramos wants to make no parking. And maybe, maybe a section of it could be made no parking to alleviate the public safety problem with the buses. But that's my question, Councilor, is, does it need to be that whole length?
Well, yeah, I mean, I would say like 302 feet, just so basically the length of a football field, right? So in State Street is considerably longer.
Right. It's, you know, it's from the intersection all the way to the rail trail.
Yeah, that's, that's not very far. I was down there several times, including this afternoon, to get one more look at it. And there's really, that, where the signs are going up, there really is no alternative. I mean, the road isn't going to be wide in there. I guess that would be the only way to alleviate the problem, would be to make the road maybe 12 feet wider. And I just don't see that happening, because now we have the rail trail there as well. So again, it won't be, the signs won't be the entire length of State Street. And so, and again, it's, it's a policy, it's, this is a result of a policy put in place by the folks who run the apartment complex, the no-smoking policy, which appears to be a significant driver of the congestion near the rail trail. So we're just reacting to their policy to try to, again, make it safe for people to access and exit. I'm sure you're aware that the traffic on North Main is considerably heavy. So I guess, you know, again, people, people will find, I think this, what's happened, I guess, some history is, the people were going out on the street. So out on the State Street, further down from where they are now. And then they were told they couldn't, they couldn't park their cars there, they couldn't loiter there, they couldn't smoke there. So they drove them further out towards Main Street and by the rail trail. So now...
And that's causing the problem.
Right.
Yep.
So I guess, you know, Officer Ramos said this has been ongoing for quite some time. They've been talking with management down there. So this is what, this is the plan they've come up with to try to remediate this problem. That's all I can share with you, Councilor.
Thank you.
You're entirely welcome. Any other members of the council? Councilor Frida?
I haven't really been paying a lot of attention to this, but just listening to the questions and your answers, I do work across the street from there. And is this, could there possibly be an encouragement? They can't park on the street, there's business, right, abutting that... They can't park on the street, there's business, right, abutting that road? Will this be encouraging people to park, use their parking lots? And...
Again, councillor, I, I'm not very good at reading people's minds or trying to figure out what human beings are going to do in reaction to, to new rules, but, I mean, I guess those businesses are private property, and so they'd have the same rights as the management of Riverside would be to, to say, hey, this is private property, and, you know, you...
I realize it's private property, but I just wonder if, if there's going to be an encouragement to create another problem? That was the only thing I, I was thinking. You know, maybe there should be a discussion with that business, there's two businesses, I think, across the street, maybe three? And not across the street, and that, that strip mall, right there, where Obershaun's used to be, there's two or three businesses there. You know, are people using the rail trail, you know, looking for a place to park?
Well, maybe some folks are in the audience this evening, we'll see. When we get to, when asked if there's anyone from the public that would like to speak, perhaps some of those business owners are...
That's your, that's your call.
Well, I have to, obviously have to do that, it's a public hearing.
Huh?
All right. Anything else from any members of the council? All right, I'm going to go to the public at this point. Is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 13-23? For the second time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 13-23? And for the third and final time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 13-23? Hearing none, I declare the public hearing closed.
All right, we are now going to hold the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the public to, to, any member of the audience to speak on any matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. At this point, no one has signed up, but if anybody is in the audience and would like to speak, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Once again, would anybody in the audience like to speak at the public forum? And for the third and final time, would anybody in the audience like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, I declare the public forum closed, and we will move back into session. And we will go right into communications from the mayor, beginning with money orders on C-34. Madam clerk.
C-34, Dean J. Mazarella, mayor, requested an appropriation of $75,000 be made to the election and registration account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
And C-34 is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course, please.
C-34 has been given regular course. Moving on to C-35.
C-35, Dean J. Mazarella, mayor, requests that the following section of the City of Leominster revised ordinance, Chapter 8, Fire Protection, Section 8-19, fees for ambulance service. The chief of the fire department shall establish the rates to be charged as fees for the city fire department ambulance service within the Commonwealth. The rates to be established shall be the local or city limit charge or other city and town charges for ambulance service set at current recommended allowances as set forth by the Medicare program, plus an additional 150% of such surcharges for basic life support, BLS service, and additional 150% of such charges for advanced life support, ALS service. The chief of the fire department shall furnish the city treasurer with a list of the persons transported monthly and the fee to be charged, and the city collector shall bill and collect the same. Be amended to the following. The chief of the fire department shall establish the rates to be charged as fees for the city fire department ambulance service within the Commonwealth. The rates to be established shall be the local or city limit charge or other city and town charges for ambulance services set at current recommended allowances as set forth by the Medicare program, plus an additional 250% of such charges for basic, basic life support, BLS service, and an additional 250% of such, such charges for advanced life support, ALS service. The chief of the fire department shall furnish the city treasurer with a list of the persons transported monthly and the fee to be charged, and the city collector shall bill and collect the same.
And C-35 is referred to the chairman of legal affairs.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course. We need to establish a public hearing. I believe, Madam clerk, January 9th, 2023, at 6:45 p.m.
And it's, and it's... And on here, on the agenda, it says 2022, so make, make sure it's 2023, if we can amend that as well, or you can update that. I know it's hard to believe, we're already flipping the number again. Okay, so, C-35 will be given regular course, and we need to establish a public hearing for January 9th, 2023, at 6:45 p.m. Is there any discussion about the public establishing the public hearing? If not, all those in favor of establishing the public hearing signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, the public hearing has been established. C-35 has been given regular course. Moving on to 15-23.
15-23. Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid, requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Cleveland Street, National Grid, install one singly-owned pole on Cleveland Street, beginning at a point approximately 150 feet northeast of the center line of the intersection of Lancaster Street slash Cleveland Street. Install one pole on Cleveland Street to relieve sag on wires and upgrade infrastructure to eliminate reported flickering. Location approximately is shown on plan attached. Wherefore appraise that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here with Mark Cleveland Street, Leominster, Massachusetts, number 30652569, November 29th, 2022. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of the said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes.
And 15-23 is referred to the chairwoman of public service.
Thank you very much. First time on the calendar. This is given regular course, and I would like a referral to the DPW.
Okay, with a referral to the DPW.
Yep, and we do have to schedule a public hearing for January 9th, 2023, at 6:50 p.m.
Okay, so this is going to be given regular course with a referral to the DPW. And all those in favor of scheduling a public hearing for January 9th, 2023, at 6:50 p.m. Signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, that public hearing has been established. Moving on to matters before the city council. Mr. Chairman of Finance, you have a financial report.
I do. We began the fiscal year on July 1 with a balance in the stabilization account of Since that time, we've added interest to the account of $61,550 for a total balance of $20,736,916. We have appropriated or have pending for appropriation $3,281,287, leaving a balance of $17,455,629. And that is the financial report.
Okay, are there any questions or comments on the financial report? Seeing none, we will move on to items under finance, beginning with C-28. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. Thank you, Mr. President. C-28, DJ Mazarella, mayor, requests that the annual tax classification hearing be scheduled for December 12 for the purpose of setting the annual factor used for fiscal year 2023. As everybody is aware, we had a public hearing earlier this evening, attended by members of the assessor's office, as well as our comptroller. The recommendation by the assessors was to adopt, as we have for many years in the past, a factor of one, and to respond no to both the residential exemption, the open space exemption, and the small commercial property exemption. It would be my position, Mr. President, to follow the recommendation as set by the assessors. As we've heard, any potential relief, even small relief to the residential classified properties requires a significant imposition to our commercial and industrial base, which is ultimately self-defeating and doesn't encourage but discourages the building up of our commercial and industrial base. And for those reasons, I would recommend, I would, for my purposes, follow the assessor's lead with each one of those four matters, and I ask you to check with members of my committee.
Councillor Cormier?
I agree with the chairman and the, and the assessor's office, so I would support that as well.
And councillor Angelini?
I would support that. I'll make it unanimous, Mr. President.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the finance committee to grant C-28. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-28 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero. C-28 has been granted. Moving on to 14-23. Mr. Chairman of Finance, are you ready to report?
Yes, 14-23, Gregory Chapdolane and Caitlin Huffman, request that the city council allow the purchasing agent to award a contract for permitting software for a six-year period regarding obtaining new permitting software to provide inspection and licensing services online. Accompanying this petition is a letter dated November 21st from Mr. Chapdolane and from our city clerk, Caitlin Huffman, regarding petition to enter into six-year contract permitting software. Dear honorable members of Leominster City Council, this petition is to allow the purchasing agent to award a contract for permitting software for a six-year period. I am in the process of preparing an invitation to bid to secure the software for the next six years. Said service is to begin sometime in February to March of 2023. Per Massachusetts General laws, Chapter 30B, Section 12B, the city can only enter into service contracts for a length of time equal to three years or less. In order to enter into service contract for a length of time greater than three years, the city council must pass by majority approval vote to allow the extension. Said council approval must be granted before the contract is executed. The city wishes to obtain a permitting software package that will allow the different types of permits, which the city departments issue, to be applied for and issued online, coordinating all said permits within the same software database, so that all involved departments can access and verify permit applications in one place. This will both streamline the process and make it easier for all involved. Since software purchases are now actually a license agreement for use, meaning no one actually purchases software anymore, this is a service the city will need to renew via the bidding process every several years. Implementation of new software-related training often results in long lead time to bring all departments up to speed. As such, it is more advantageous from a price point of view to enter a long-term contract for the particular service. Since this new software application that the city has not yet, not yet previously, has not used previously, we will be structuring the bid contract so that it is a three-year guaranteed contract with three additional one-year option years. This petition must be voted upon now as I prepare to issue the new bid, as I must know the time period slash contract length, I will be able to structure the bid around. I would respectfully advise a city council vote in favor of extending this permitting software contract term to cover a six-year period. If you have any questions concerning this issue, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Greg C. Chapdolane, purchasing agent, Caitlin Huffman, city clerk. As you know, we've all been down this road a few times now. I trust that the purchasing agent and our clerk have done their homework. This sounds like an exciting advance forward, and something that will benefit the city in terms of efficiency going forward, permitting, which becomes a greater burden for city officials all the time. Having a reliable vendor in place for a lengthy period of time, and as you know, the purchasing agent has told us in the past, there are fail safes in these contracts, though, if we run into a, a dud of a vendor to get out of. It's, if it's his opinion that this is the best way to price it and the best way to implement it, especially with a new software purchase like this, I'm willing to take his lead. And it would be my position, Mr. President, to grant 14-23. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Okay, councillor Cormier?
I agree.
And councillor Angelini?
I've been supportive of these extended contracts in the past. I think it gives the city a lot of flexibility and certainly a money-saving opportunity, so I will support this as well. Mr. President?
Okay, thank you very much. You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the finance committee to grant 14-23. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 14-23 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 14-23 has been granted. Moving on to money orders, beginning with C-30. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
Yes, I am. C-30, Dean J. Mazarella, mayor, requests an appropriation of $656,863.50 be made to the attached special revenue funds, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Accompanying this communication was a letter from the mayor dated November 18th, 2022. Dear members of the city council, I respectfully request the appropriation of $656,863.50 be made to the attached special revenue funds, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. The funding is to comply with DLS regulations. For the uninitiated, that's Division of Local Services, State Agency, and address all deficit balances on the general ledger. Additionally, the sum of $97,459.66 will be closed from special revenue funds back to the general fund. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me in my office at any time. Attached to the letter was a whole long list of special revenue funds, largely grants, with either positive or negative balances. In addition to that, we received a letter dated today's date from our comptroller. Dear members of the city council, the comptroller's office is respectfully requesting an appropriation of $656,863.50 be made to the attached special revenue funds, in the same amount to be transferred from stabilization. This is to comply with the DLS requirements to address all deficit balances in the general ledger. When I took this position, DLS indicated that I had two years to address slash fund these balances, or they would raise the amount on the recap. The balances are from the grants years as far back as 2001. Most of these funds were set up as expenses flowed through them, but when the revenue came in, it was deposited into the general fund. The information that is sent in with the deposit is not always clear. The reverse situation has happened as well, where funds have been expended in the general fund and the revenue was deposited into another fund. There is $97,459.66 being turned back to the general fund from the old grants as well. I have worked extensively with the school to adopt new reconciling procedures going forward. I have also worked with the treasurer's office to match the unknown deposits to appropriate fund. As the new grants are established on the city side, if they do not flow through our grant administrator, we are putting additional procedures in place to monitor the grants. Addressing these balances will bring us into compliance and streamline the reconciliation process. If you have any questions, please let me know. There was a referral on this petition to the superintendent of schools, and she responded as follows. Dear Mr. Bedanza, thank you for your referral on C-30. It is my understanding that this represents the reconciliation of many grant accounts with histories dating back as far as 20 years. About half of the schools, about half our school grants and the other half is on the city side. I'm happy to report that my business manager, Melanie Mickles, has worked efficiently with the city comptroller, and nearly all of the grants during my tenure have already been reconciled. Since it is my further understanding that the Department of Revenue is requiring the full reconciliation that this communication represents, I urge its passage. I did have a lengthy conversation as well with the comptroller. I'll tell you a little bit of history. This came back down to us, I think in 2015, in a smaller amount, about $250,000, if I'm not mistaken, for the same exact purpose, and at that time, for whatever reason, the petition was tabled. So this has been sort of, the goalpost has been moved down the path all the way to us here in 2022. This is essentially a misclassification of revenue. So many of you are aware that when a grant is established for the city, we have to spend the money first, and then there's a reimbursement that we receive later on. When those reimbursements came in, in many cases, they were classified as general revenue instead of going to the grant account for which they were the reimbursement. That's why you have those negative balances, and it was never really caught up. So this is really an accounting principle that we're addressing. Of that amount, 346,000 of these are on the city side, 310,000 are on the school side. We don't have a choice. It has to be done. It's been carried as a note on our audit for many, many years now. The Department of Revenue is, the, the roosters have come home to roost, so to speak. If we don't pass this, what the Department of Revenue is going to do is they're going to add it to our levy... to add it to our levy capacity. We have excess levy capacity. My calculations suggest that in order to add this to our levy, that would result in about a .8%, a .80 tax increase. And so if we used our full two and a half levy capacity, which we typically do each year, and the department, and we didn't pass this, and the Department of Revenue decided to add it to the levy, that tax increase could be, instead of two and a half, someplace in the neighborhood of about 3.3% tax increase, which I don't think any of us want to face. So this is a matter of sort of catch-up, something that's been really lingering for a long period of time. We have to, we have to address all of it, as the comptroller indicated and the mayor. Some of it is on the positive side. In other words, some classified in a way where the money, the general fund money actually went into the grant account. That's $97,459.66. That'll essentially get added back to free cash once we do this. It's not as if this money was never accounted for or not used, it's just the way it was accounted for. And this is essentially a sort of, "chewing up the accounts" is the exact words that the comptroller used. It would be my strong recommendation that we adopt, or we grant C-30. It's our responsibility to do so. We had the benefit of the money, and it's, you know, sort of the day of reckoning. Unfortunately, we have the ability to do it. So I'd ask you to check with members of my committee, Mr. President.
Okay, Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
And Counselor Angelini?
It appears that this issue developed long before I was a member of the council. But now that I'm here, I believe it's my responsibility as well to make sure that it's not added to the levy capacity by the Department of Revenue. So I will support this as well, Mr. President.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-30. Is there any discussion? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I have a question. So this is to address all deficit balances. Is this all old deficit balances? Or could we in the future see another request to cover additional deficit balances?
You can never, could never rule out what could happen in the future, of course. But this is a complete "chewing up" of the accounts. And as indicated in both the, you know, the superintendent's letter as well as the comptroller, they've caught up now. They have a process in place where this is now efficiently operating, and I don't expect that this is going to happen again.
Excuse me, we do have the comptroller in the audience.
I know the comptroller's here.
Okay. Didn't know if you had the site.
Okay.
Right. Through the chair, could we have the comptroller just answer that?
Sure, if you'd like to make a motion to go into recess.
I'll make that motion, thank you.
A motion, and seconded by Counselor Frida. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of going into recess signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, we are in recess. And if the comptroller could please come into the chambers. Thank you very much. There's some questions for her. Mr. Chairman of Finance, I'll let you facilitate this.
All right, well, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr asked a question, which I answered, maybe not as satisfactorily as the comptroller, but is that essentially the case? That we now have an efficient process for classifying this revenue appropriately?
We do, and those are all the special revenue funds. There will be a couple trust funds. So I had to get the majority of it on so that when we go to sign everything tomorrow after the tax classification hearing, they don't add it to our recap. So I wanted to make sure, because, you know, if it got voted down, then that's when they could do it. They could do it tomorrow and add it on top of this year's recap if I have not made any progress towards cleaning up these balances. There aren't very many in the trust funds. I think there's only two or three accounts, so it's the majority of the balances.
Do you have any idea, in those two or three accounts, what kind of money we're talking about?
One of them is a little bit on the larger side. I think one of them's around $100,000. So I think together, all of them were around $250,000.
Okay.
So that one will be coming down as well, because we'll be, and that was more of a process issue, because the books were in more of a statutory format before for trust funds, and it was very different. We had to transfer the money from the trust accounts into this kind of holding account that is a city account, and then it would get transferred to whatever account it was funding, most likely the general fund, because it was like the sale of lots in the cemetery. Well, during all of the changeover of people, the money was removed out of that, but the funds went directly to the general fund instead. That kind of skipped the process, and that's just, that was just a process thing. So it's just cleaning up that fund, which we will actually no longer be using those funds, because the trust funds are now all on the books. So I brought them all on the books. So going forward, we have everything all in one place, so it just goes directly from the cemetery right to whatever appropriation it's funding. So that stuff will be removed.
Excellent. And then you did say in your letter that you have processes in place so that this won't happen again?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's the, you know, most important part of this article, is that, you know, we have improved the internal controls over a lot of the areas. Like it says, you know, I and the school have worked extensively together, and we have reconciled grant years 20, 21, and 22, all the way through the end of October. So we have a really good process in place. We're looking at them monthly to make sure that, you know, the grant years are spent in order, and Melanie and her team have done a great job over there. There's been turnover for that grant administrator as well. So it's a learning process, and, you know, we're, you know, moving through it. And also, not everything goes through our grant administrator here, so some of the departments will take it upon themselves to fund, you know, write their own grants, which is fine, and we encourage that. But at the same time, we've tried to put a few more things in place, just so that we do monitor it, to make sure that, you know, once they've spent the money, that they do requests for the whole reimbursement, and it comes back in. Some state agencies take a long time to get the funds, so you do have to be persistent sometimes, just to make sure that we do receive the funds after we've spent them.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Anyone else have questions? Counsel Brady?
Yeah, I just want to really compliment you. Had I had this letter three weeks ago, it would have saved me a whole lot of time in asking a lot of questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, it just, it makes a lot of sense now.
Okay. And I had planned to come down, so that's why I was, I knew I was going to be here for the tax classification hearing, but then I heard there were questions, I was like, well, I'll send it down, just.
Yeah, this is perfect, and I thank you and congratulate you on the job you're doing.
Oh, thank you very much. It's a team effort, that is for sure. I feel like everybody has really, you know, stepped up and got on board with some of the new processes that we're doing, so.
Counselor Frida, do you have a question?
Jen, thanks for coming in. I wish we had heard from you sooner, quite honestly. I think, I think this took a little life on its own, just because we were questioning some things, and, you know, we're asking, we're being asked to spend $650,000, the taxpayer money. And I think we have a responsibility. There were some pretty substantial amounts here. And were some of these things paid without getting an appropriation through the council?
No, I don't believe so. I truly believe that, and a lot of them are grants, so they're reimbursement-based grants, and the money, when it comes into the treasurer's office, it's all, it doesn't say, you know, this is for such and such. It's all coded, and a lot of the ones that we get regularly, fine, we know exactly what the codes are, we put them in. Others, they don't give you, they don't send any paperwork, they just put the money in the account. So if it sits there for too long, then it'll just end up getting deposited, because we have to reconcile cash. So that's where things will get posted to the general fund. Snow and ice is on there, and that's a prime example of one, that the snow and ice, all those expenses flow through the general fund. That's where the workers go, that's where the money's spent. Well, it was a FEMA reimbursement, so the money came back in and went into the FEMA fund. So it's more just classifications and looking to make sure we're matching up the revenues with the expenses in the appropriate places.
So I guess, from my perspective, it's a little shame on us in a way, because the Finance Chair Cross mentioned that this has shown up in some of the audits in the past, and if DLS is pressuring now.
Yep.
And I'm not even going to ask if you were part of the audits.
I've written that comment for many years.
But we should be seeing those audits when they're done. If we had seen them, then we might have picked up on some of these issues. I mean, I go back, we've had a-
Hey, we're not having debate, is it questions? I don't want to start debate. So there's questions for the comptroller, you're welcome, but we can't, we're in recess.
What did I not do here?
We had a member that was starting to, we were going to debate. We don't, we're not debating, just ask her.
I don't think I was debating.
No, you weren't. It's me, he's-
I mean, I was clearing a statement that we have an audit that we haven't seen.
I think the president is schooling me. Don't worry about it.
Never mind, I'll stand corrected. Thank you, Jen, I appreciate it, I understand.
Any other questions? Okay, so we are back in session now. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I will turn this back over to you. Your recommendations-
Again, my recommendation is to grant C-30. Without ascribing any fault to anybody, this did come down to us in 2015. I was here, and for whatever reason, it got tabled. So, you know, that number was a lot smaller than this one, and, but, you know, it was before the council back then, for whatever reason. Counsel Frida?
Yeah, if I'm allowed to speak?
Yes.
You have the floor, yeah.
We've also sat here, probably, I'm not, yeah, you were here for one of them. We've also had a couple of things go through this council. Royal heating at the emergency management, Steve Mulaney, that went on forever. These were issues that were very serious and very expensive. I'm, I've never once said that this was anybody's fault.
Right.
And I fully agree, we need to pay for them.
Good.
But I think we do have a responsibility with taxpayer dollars to find out how we got here.
Of course.
How did we get to this?
Yep.
And I'm really not excited about getting corrected when I'm asking a question.
Counsel Frida?
So I, I mean, those were substantial, and we need to learn from those. I mean, we should see the audits, and I think, you know, Jen is a pleasure to work with in that office, and I think if we can make it a habit to get those audits when they're done, so that, we should be looking at those, to make sure the finances are running, going appropriately. So, I mean, I'll support it now that she's come down with the explanation. And, you know, I totally agree, we got to get this reconciled and get it off the books and get back so DLS is not looking at us the way they've looked at us for a long time. So, thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion on C-30? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-30 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-30 is granted. Does the chairman have an order?
I do. Order that the sum of $656,863.50 be appropriated to the special revenue funds account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
Okay, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, the order for C-30 has been adopted. Moving on to C-31.
C-31, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests an appropriation of $27,511.68 be transferred from the highway regular labor account to the cemetery part-time summer account. There is a letter from Raymond Racine attached to this communication. The Department of Public Works is respectfully requesting a transfer of funds from the highway regular labor account to the cemetery part-time summer account in the amount of $27,511.68. The purpose of this request is to create a full-time W-3 position in the cemetery department, eliminating a part-time summer position. The funds from this transfer will be used to supplement the difference in pay for the remainder of the '23 fiscal year, effective 11/18/2022. The funding is available in the highway regular labor account due to various vacant positions in the department, creating excess funds for the fiscal year. So this is kind of a happy, interesting story. There are four part-timers over there at the cemetery to take care of the 55 acres we have. Three of them work for, also work for the DPW generally, so they work all year long. And this last position was seasonal only. The gentleman in question was challenged essentially by the DPW director, said if you get a CDL, I could use you, you know, on a plow truck or a sanding truck. And the young man went out and got his CDL at his own expense, some $4,000, and this is our DPW director following through on what he promised him. As you know, it's very difficult to get plow operators, if we've been watching the news for the last couple of years. So this man now is probably out in the storm yesterday doing salting duties, and it's worked out, it'll work out well for the DPW to have, not only keep him there during the summer when they're needed to maintain the cemetery, but have his services the rest of the year, especially during the winter season. So it'd be my position to grant C-31. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee, Mr. President.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
And Counselor Angelini? Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-31. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-31 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-31 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
I do. Order that the sum of $27,511.68 be appropriated to the highway regular, be appropriated to the cemetery part-time summer account, transferred from the, to be appropriated from the highway regular labor account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, the order for C-31 has been adopted. Moving on to C-32.
C-32, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests an appropriation of $9,500 be made to the cemetery account from the cemetery perpetual care income account RE, covering a mapping system linked to our GIS software. I have a letter from the mayor dated November 9th, 2022. I respectfully request the appropriation of $9,500 be made to the cemetery account from the cemetery perpetual care income account. These funds would cover a mapping system linked to our GIS software. We have several requests from citizens looking for specific burial locations. This mapping system will make it easier for people to locate plot numbers. See enclosed quotation from Ty &amp; Bond. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me at any time. Attached to the communication is in fact a letter from Ty &amp; Bond to address to our DPW director dated November 8th, 2022, with a scope of services in implementing this GIS mapping system. This is sort of something long overdue in our cemetery system. Our record-keeping and our records over the years, for a variety of reasons, have not exactly been up to snuff, quite honestly. And the DPW director also informs me that, you know, the DPW did in fact save the city a lot of money with this, because they did all the data input, which was substantial, relying on Ty &amp; Bond largely for the software involved. Anybody who's had anything to do with the cemetery knows that this is something sorely needed. And it would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C-32. I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Counselor Angelini? Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C-32. Is there any discussion? Counselor Frida?
Yeah, I'm going to agree with the Finance Chair. I had a personal experience. I had a cousin who, her significant other lives in Washington, DC, and they were coming up to find two graves of his grandparents. And she went to the cemetery for us and couldn't find anything. I followed up and went to the cemetery. We couldn't find anything, but I got to tell you, the woman in the office and the gentleman that was working on the grounds, we went to look for it, based on just small details, and we did find the two graves. So when he came out here, he was able to find them. So the GIS mapping system is definitely crucial, because there's a lot of people coming back to visit, you know, the grave sites, and they need to be able to find them. So I wholeheartedly support this, and they do, the small staff that they have there do work incredibly hard and very well on what they do.
Yeah, Mr. Picki does a very good job, and this is really a big update to the situation and will serve us as a community well into the future, I believe. Counsel Brady?
Yeah, I just wanted to put my two cents in there, too, because last Memorial Day, we were out doing flags, and some of them were very difficult. They had no sense or, because it's been many years, so for 95- They had no sense or, because it's been many years, so for $9,500, this is, you know, now people can do it online, and it, and it's a respect that it should deserve.
I agree. Is there any other discussion on C-32? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-32 signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C-32 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
I do, order the sum of $9,500 be made to the cemetery account, appropriated from the cemetery perpetual income account, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order, please signify by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, the order for C-32 has been adopted. Moving on to items under Legal Affairs, beginning with 13-23. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am indeed, Mr. President. 13-23 is Officer Julia Ramos, Police Department, request to amend Chapter 13-24, the revised ordinances entitled motor vehicles and traffic. Chapter 13, Section 13 through 24, the revised ordinance entitled no parking on certain streets is hereby amending by inserting the following text, State Street, both sides, from points beginning 20 feet from the intersection of North Main Street to a point 302 feet from said intersection. Mr. President, as you're aware, Legal Affairs Committee conducted a public hearing on this earlier this evening. The communication from Officer Ramos in the Lemmister Police Department Traffic Division was, this is a public safety matter. Again, to recap, there were some issues with buses, both exiting and entering State Street from North Main Street safely. I'd also like to add that now that we're into the winter season, we have the added, the added problem of snow and ice there as well. I know there was some concern for the displaced smokers, and obviously fair concern for perhaps abutting businesses. But I can assure you, if there is any collateral problems associated with these no parking signs, as Ward 5 Council, I'll be the first to hear of it. And I think we'll ask the Lemmister Police Department to assist us in controlling any problems that may arise. Having said that, Mr. President, I would recommend that we grant 13-23 and adopt Officer Ramos's petition. And I would ask you to poll members of Legal Affairs Committee.
Counselor Badanza?
I'm in favor.
And Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Okay, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant 13-23. Is there any discussion? Counselor Shalfu Zephyr?
Yeah, thank you very much, through the chair to the Legal Affairs Chair. You mentioned some other explanation about public safety and buses. Was that something that Officer Ramos submitted? I mean, I don't have that. All I have is his, the petition, which has like the ordinance language.
Yeah, no, I didn't receive anything either, but I spoke to the chief.
Okay.
And Chief Kennedy informed me that this is a public safety issue. He, he's the one that brought the buses to my attention. That was a phone call, it wasn't a formal
Okay.
referral.
Okay. Would you consider further time? The reason I ask, there are a couple of reasons. One of them is I'd like to get Riverside on the record, saying that they, that, yeah, this is really going to alleviate a problem on their property. And there might, you know, by, you know, solving one problem, we might be creating another. And I think maybe there's some, you know, way to alleviate the public safety problem, but also, you know, accommodate the people that live there and, you know, need that area to
I think I stated, Counselor, earlier that the Police Department worked with the management at Riverside, and so this is, this has been an ongoing thing. And this is what they came up with, working together jointly. So, to be honest with you, because of the public safety perspective on this, I'd really try, try not to give it further time. I'd really like to get this thing moving, because as you know, we're gonna need two readings, and before you know it, you know, it'll be springtime.
Right. Yeah, I, you know, I'd love to, I'm a supporter of public safety. I think in this particular instance, I always just have some concerns about it.
Again, we had a public hearing, there was no one in attendance this evening that seemed to have an opinion on it.
Right.
So I just think that, to be honest with you, I think further time is just gonna compound this, this issue. And I, I'd hate to have some tragedy befall us over there, because we dragged our feet on this. It's been, it's been going on for quite some time.
Okay, I wasn't aware of it.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Brady?
Just to kind of go on to what Sue was saying, if we did have further time, I, I know it was advertised as a public hearing. I'm just, I'm not convinced that the residents of Riverside knew about this, or were told about it. They're, they may not be the, they might not have heard about it, let me leave it like that. So further time, I, I'm 100% for public safety. And, you know, I just, I can't support this as it is tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there any other discussion on 13-23? Seeing none, the recommendation on the floor is to grant. So at this point, I will, I will take a vote. To all those in favor of granting 13-23, signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of six to three.
Seven to two.
Sorry. Nope, Frank.
Oh, I'm sorry, Frank, I didn't see you.
Frank, Bill, and Sue.
Thank you.
Thank God I'm paying attention.
Someone's paying attention.
All right, on a, with a vote of six to three, 13-23 has been granted. All right, all set? All right, moving on to resolution, C-33. I didn't mean to be, I didn't
Excuse me, Mr. President, I'm gonna recuse myself from this. I have an ongoing business relationship with New England Wire Products in a third party, so I'm gonna step out.
Okay. All right, Counselor Cormier, are you ready to report on C-33?
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution C-33, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests a vote of support by resolution for New England Wire Products located at 9 Mohawk Drive, Lemmister, Mass. Mr. President, just as a housekeeping matter, we were all sent the copy of the original resolution and a copy of the TIF. We have since received another letter from Amanda Curtis, from the Economic Development. And I'll just read it into the record. "November 3rd, 2022, Dear Council Members, I respectfully request that the attached changes to the language in the TIF petition currently under review for New England Wire Products is accepted. The New England Wire Products TIF and resolution have been updated to reflect an increase in job creation in the five-year window. The previous items noted, 75 to 100 jobs created, which turned out to be outdated information. I have learned that New England Wire Products intends to in fact create 200 full-time permanent positions. Thank you for your consideration to accept this change." So, Mr. President, based on that, and before we get into any kind of a reading of it, I think we have to move to amend the original language of the petition.
The resolution?
The resolution. So I would ask if we could do that, and obviously this is good news, so
Sure. So if you'd like to make that amendment, just, you can read in what you want to amend, and then we'll have a vote on the amendment. And then you can read the resolution afterward as amended, and then we'll vote on the whole thing, as amended.
So I'd ask that it be amended from 75 to 100 jobs created to the creation of 200 jobs, full, 200 full-time permanent positions.
Okay, and that's your motion?
That's my motion to amend, yes.
Do we have a second on that motion?
A second.
Counselor Badanza, is there any discussion on the, on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor of that amendment signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the resolution has been amended. And now I will refer the amended resolution back to you, Madam Chairwoman. And you can report on it, and then, do we have to read it before, before we vote on it? Okay, so if you'd like to read the resolution now as amended, and then we'll check with your committee, and then go from there.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution, New England Wire Products Tax Incentive Financing TIF, T-I-F, agreement. Whereas the proposed project is located at 101 and 107 Scott Drive, Lemmister, Mass, which is within the boundaries of the Assessor's Map Lots, 466 to dash eight and 466 dash eight A. Whereas the City of Lemmister has agreed to offer New England Wire Products a tax increment financing agreement. Said agreement is hereby supported by the City Council, and the tax incrementing financing plan is incorporated by reference herein. Whereas New England Wire Products will invest approximately $3 million over a five-year period and create an additional 200 full-time jobs for residents of the city and North Worcester County Economic Target Area, ETA, over a period of five years. Whereas the City Council of the City of Lemmister strongly supports increased economic development to provide additional jobs for city residents and industrial activity within the city to promote and develop a healthy economy and stronger tax base. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Lemmister approves the project application for New England Wire Products and forward said application for certification to the Massachusetts Economic Assistance Coordinating Council for its approval and endorsement. Further, the City Council of the City of Lemmister supports the mayor to enter into a tax increment financing agreement between the City of Lemmister and New England Wire Products. Said agreement will provide for an exemption on property taxes based on the growth portion in excess valuation of the property as follows. Real estate, the agreement calls for an exemption for, from taxation specifically on the increased value of real estate property as a result of the redevelopment as follows in the table shown below. Tax exemption formula, year one, July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2024, 100% of the increment. Year two, July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025, 80% of the increment. Excuse me, year three, July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026, 60% of the increment. Year four, July 1st, 2026 to June 30th, 2027, 40% of the increment. Year five, July 1st, 2027 to June 30th, 2028, 20% of the increment. In accordance with the requirements and regulations established, which govern the implementation of such tax increment financing agreements, the agreement will be in effect as of fiscal year 2024, July 1st, 2023, and will extend through fiscal year 2028, July 30th, 2027. And the, there's a signature panels adopted by the Lemmister City Communication and the date with the signature required from the City Council, Kate Lynn Hoffman, City Clerk, and Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor of Lemmister. Included with this resolution is the, we have a copy of the entire packet. I'm not going to read the entire application packet. That is on file with the city at the clerk's office and is available to anybody who wishes to have the entire copy, including mapage. That will be available at the city clerk's office. The city, and it's been my experience, and we've done this a few times, the tax incentive agreement is something that is very valuable to the city, and it helps people that are making a significant investment, and in this case, a $3 million investment into the property for over a five-year period. It gives them incentive to move on. And, and do we have, is Ms. Curtis available? Ms. Curtis is here from the Economic Development. We have the comptroller's office is also here, and is there someone from Mohawk Wire? Okay.
Do you want to invite them in? Do you want to go into recess for a moment?
If we could go into recess just briefly, and they can, they're here, let's, let them fill us in a little bit.
Okay, if you'd like to make a motion for recess?
Yes, make a motion for recess.
Do we have a second? Thank Bill, Counselor Brady, all those in favor of going into recess signify in the usual manner. By a vote of eight to zero, we are now in recess. You guys may come in briefly, and if there's any questions. Is there any? Go ahead.
Good evening, and thank you. Thank you for coming down, thank you for your patience, it's been a rather long this is the new language we're being Thank you for coming down, my name is Pauline Cormier, I'm the chairperson of the Ways and Means Committee. Other members of the Ways and Means Committee, to my immediate left is Counselor Frank Arndinger, who is the clerk, and immediately across from me is Counselor Todd Deacon, as a third member. So I want to welcome you here. If you wouldn't mind just introducing yourselves for anyone, and
I'm Kristin Gall, I'm the CFO at New England Wire Products.
Amanda Curtis, Economic Development Coordinator for the City of Lemmister.
William Conner, Chief Assessor.
Thank you for coming down, and, and I'm gonna throw this out there just for people that, that may not understand what a TIF is and what that means to the city, if you wouldn't mind explaining that to us. Ms. Curtis, or, or, or
Okay, so in, in this case, this is a tax increment financing, a commitment agreement. The, the increment that they will benefit from is the difference between the base value of the property as it stands now. I think we ended up using a base year as fiscal 2022. Any improvements that will be made to the property will be considered the increment. The value of that increment will be discounted over the course of five years by 20% every year, increasing. So 100% of the value will be discounted in the first year, and then down to 80%, 60, and so on, all the way down to 20. And then after five years, there'll be that full value. Every one of those years, the increment that comes on, and the city benefits from that, has new, has new growth.
So, just to clarify, so they're, what they pay in taxes now, they're going to continue?
Yep.
And it's only the additions, the, the increase in the, in the improvement in the properties? Okay. Are there safety measures in place?
Yes, absolutely. So they have to report to the state annually on their commitments to job creation. And if they fail to meet those numbers, then there is a reason for us to petition to eliminate the TIF.
Ms. Gall, thank you for coming down. Do you want to give us a little bit of a, a little bit of a background on the company and where you expect to go over the next five years, obviously?
Yeah, so we're a family business. We were founded in 1980, and we manufacture custom retail displays. So really, anything in the retail environment that's made out of metal, we'll make that. So we work with Walmart, Home Depot, Dollar General, we do a lot of grocery stores, convenience stores. And kind of through the pandemic and a lot of the supply chain issues, a lot of these customers are really focusing on domestic manufacturing. So we have a lot of significant, like, three to five-year commitments from our customers, and our backlog has increased about five times. So we've been looking for additional space. For the last three years, we've been looking in our other locations in Georgia and Maine as well. But we really love working in Massachusetts, and our headquarters is here, and we would prefer to grow here. So when this opportunity came up, it was really a no-brainer for us. It's about 10 feet from our headquarters. So hopefully, we'll be able to connect the two buildings, and that will give us a total of about 400,000 square feet. So we'll be hiring various positions, engineers, accounting staff, human resources, electricians, quality control, and then unskilled labor as well. Yeah, so we've really had steady growth over the last 40 years, but it's kind of increased exponentially over the last three.
What is your employee retention like? Do you have people that have been there forever, people that have
Yeah, a lot of our, a lot of our help have, have been there for their entire careers. We have a lot of family members as well, so that's really how we're able to get, to hire quickly is through people who already work here. So we have husbands and wives, and then their children come to work for us, and their cousins come and work for us, and a lot of people who have built their careers and a lot of people who have built their career with us.
Thank you. That's my questions. I'm going to open it up to members of my committee. Counselor Arndinger?
Thank you very much. Mrs. Gall, yeah, thank you very much. 200 jobs, that's quite impressive over a five-year period. Could you give me a, a quick overview of the percentage, you know, between like administrative and engineers and, you know, just regular factory workers?
I would say like 70% of the job will be factory workers, and some of that's more skilled, like machine operators and McWelders. Those are more skilled roles in the factory. And then the rest will be mostly probably engineers and accounting and HR as well.
Would it be safe to assume that the majority of the employee hiring will be done in the last few years of the TIF?
I think it will be kind of steady growth over the, over the five years.
Steady growth, okay.
I mean, it, it is hard hiring quickly, but we would like to have it more so on the, the front couple of years. But just trying to be realistic with the labor market and how it is hiring people.
And, by the way, Massachusetts is a lot better than Maine or Georgia.
Yeah. No, it's the, it's the best place to live as an employee. So that's, I'm excited to grow here.
That's it?
That's it.
Counselor Deacon, any questions?
Yes, thank you for coming down. I think these TIF agreements are very crucial in, in the city for economic development. And we love having you on board and establish yourself even further. So thank you for that, and I wish you guys the best of luck. Thank you.
Any other members of the council? Counselor Brady?
This is probably for Amanda more than anything else. Can you tell me the North Worcester County Economic Target Area, what that encompasses?
That's a great question.
Because I didn't know.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a target area that was developed through the state and the, and the counties, not federal. The TIFs and, you know, any, anything that we would award like that should be, they have to fall into these targeted areas that come together.
Because it says the city, obviously, but that doesn't give you from recruiting out of state?
No, there's, there's no recrution. There's, you, they want to see, I think in this case, they were able to say that they can report on people who are going to be working from Northern Worcester County, but they can't hire based on that. They can, so I mean, it's just, I guess it's just a reporting issue on this, but as long as these are in an economic targeted area, then they're allowed.
All right. So they get determined by the state?
Yes, and, yeah, and in cooperation with the, with the counties.
Great, thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
So the $3 million investment, is that in specifically, is that in the building?
Yeah.
In the expansion? So that's?
Yeah, so the building is really, it's custom fit to Spectra coating that's in there now, and there's holding tanks and a lot of like electrical work that's specific to the equipment they have in there now. We want to take a lot of walls down, renovate offices, connect the two buildings potentially. Just needs general paint and a lot of maintenance.
Okay. So that's, so, so the increment that you were talking about earlier, you know, the 100% of the, the schedule is applied against that 3 million?
The 3 million is what they're planning on investing, and what that turns out to be in value is to be determined when, when they get there. Basically, well, usually we're looking for an occupancy permit, but in this case, it'll be different. It'll be basically, when they tell us that they're done, we'll come out and we'll assess.
And assess it then?
So it might not be 3 million. It might be more, it might be less. But the commitment for 3 million is what we are looking for in order to get into an agreement.
Right, and that's what you project?
Yep.
Okay, all righty, thank you. Counselor?
Thank you. You just mentioned something that I thought maybe we had overlooked. And you're going to be hiring a lot of contractors and electricians and plumbers and all this type of stuff immediately. So we're going to see an immediate impact on this, you know, TIF. Not, not five years down the road or a year down the road, but right now, next, whenever you start construction, right?
Yeah.
So it's going to be a big plus.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Just a comment, but, yeah, thank you.
Counselor Frida?
Yeah, I'm not sure who wants to answer this, but do you have a dollar figure, approximate dollar figure of the first 100%?
Well, we would basically, when we submitted it to the state, we did it with last year's tax rate, which was 1656. So if you multiplied 3 million by that, if you allow me to pull out my calculator.
Can you do it in your head?
I'm disappointed in you. I thought you'd be able to just do it just like that.
I'm disappointed in myself. So that's $49,680.
Okay. I, I've supported every TIF we've done down here, and I think we've only had one go bad over, over 30 years that I can recall. But I do think it's important, especially in light of just reporting that the average single-family home is going up $272, that people understand the number of people you're going to hire, the investment in the community, that it's, it's worth, and in the long run, will be a benefit to the community. Because people hear TIFs, and they just think we give money away sometime. I think they need to understand, you know, the implication and, and how it all goes together. So, you know, with, with the night that we're talking increase, it's important to say, you know, the reduction or the exemption of a tax, there's a benefit on the other side that supersedes that. So.
Especially in this case where it's not, you know, like a new, new building. This is, this is something that's, nobody's going to feel something coming off of a tax roll. It's still there, and it's just coming on slower.
And also just to add, we really look for employees who want to have their careers with us, and we have a lot of employees who are currently looking to move into Leominster, who live in like surrounding towns. So I hope that that will continue with the additional people we hire as well.
No, I, I agree. I think one of the best things is to see an existing company expanding in our community. Almost, to me, it says more than a new company coming in. You know, I mean, it's a desire to stay here and, and, you know, it's a good cooperative effort. So, thank you.
Any other questions? With that, I will thank you all for coming in.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
And we now, we now stand back in session. Thank you guys very much. So, Madam Chairwoman, I will ask you to, if you're all set for a recommendation on C-33.
I am, Mr. President. I, I very strongly support this. I, the fact that New England Wire Products has been here forever, they have a tremendous track record in this city. I think it's only going to benefit us in the long term. So it would be my position to adopt the resolution, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Arndinger?
I certainly agree.
Counselor Deacon?
I agree also.
Okay, so it's a unanimous recommendation that we adopt this resolution on C-33. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, I'll do this in a roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Badanza.
Yea.
Counselor Cormier?
Yea.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yea.
Counselor Brady?
Yea.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counselor Deacon?
Yea.
Counselor Frida?
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. The resolution on C-33 has been adopted. Moving on to items under new business, we have two first readings of inordinates, and I'll wait for the Chairman of Legal Affairs to return to the chambers.
Where did he went to?
He went to the tavern.
Went to where?
Here it comes.
I can tell you the, oh, good. Welcome back. Nice of you to join us again. So we have, we are now on new business. We have two first readings of inordinates, and I'm sure you've probably have been informed as I have been that they are not backed. The city solicitor has, has not been well and did not get them back to us. So I will let you handle them, but I think we know which way they're going to go.
Thank you, Mr. President.
10-23.
10-23 is the first reading of inordinates. Elizabeth Wood, Planning Director, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the lot with requirement for lots in the rural residential zone. As the president just advised, and the city clerk, apparently votes haven't come back from KP law in ordinance form. So at this time, I will be recommending further time, and I will ask you, poll members of my committee.
Counselor Badanza?
Looks like we have no choice.
Counselor Cormier?
Agreed.
Okay, so the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee is to give 10-23 further time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of further time to 10-23, signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 10-23 has been given further time. 11-23.
Thank you, Mr. President. 11-23. David Cormier, Ward 3 Counselor, and Pauline Cormier, Ward 2 Counselor, request to amend Chapter 13, Section 13-29 of the revised ordinances entitled Handicap Parking Spaces, and add the following. Add three handicap parking spaces in the Carter Park parking lot on Main Street, MAP 24, Apostle 9, at the southernmost part of the lot. Once again, Mr. President, the city clerk has advised that this is not, petition 11-23 has not been returned in ordinance form from KP law. So tonight, I will be recommending further time, and I would ask you to poll members of my committee.
Counselor Badanza?
I'm in accord.
Counselor Cormier?
Agreed.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give 11-23 further time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving 11-23 further time, signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 11-23 has indeed been given further time. Is there any new business to come before the City Council? Seeing none, is there any old business? Seeing none, is there anything in the community calendar, other than there's, there's a Patriots game on, like, now?
Zero, zero.
Counselor, I mean, Counselor, Madam Clerk?
So I have your plaque for the year.
It's hard to believe another year is gone.
The fifth plaque I've had to give, give out already. Time flies. It's a little different. They ran out of the typical kind, but it's still nice.
Thank you all very much. Thank you. Thank you very much for a good and productive year. It's hard to believe another year has come and gone. Thank you very much.
And then the last thing I have is January 3, which is a Tuesday. It's going to be the inaugurational meeting. We're going to meet here in City Council Chambers at 6:00 PM. The actual meeting occurs at 6:30 PM. You should receive a letter via snail mail from the mayor's office. I think they were sent out last Friday.
Okay, all right. Is there any other items under the community calendar? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn in a second. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, is there any discussion about adjournments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adjournments, signify in usual manner. By a vote of nine to zero, we are now adjourned. Thank you all very much. Enjoy the holidays.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
We'll see you all next year.